There's a lot of people.
There are. The qualifying year is always held on the even year. So this year, 2010, we'll qualify for the National Senior Games in 2011 in Houston, Texas. We're, all the numbers aren't quite in. We're projecting around 2,000. We'll participate in the Pasadena area in 2010. So that's a lot of people.
Yeah, it is.
And in 26 sports.
Exactly. Wow. That's great. Now, do people bring their families? Are they bringing their adult children and grandchildren to this?
A lot of them do. It's at, when we hold it, it's a sort of a precarious time of the year because school isn't necessarily out. Where you find the grandchildren coming, becoming more a part of it, is at the National Games because that is truly held when summer, when school is out. But just that brought up something. Two of our favorite, or my favorite events, both in swimming and track, we hold a grandparent-grandchild relay.
Oh, how fun. It's kind of like a three-legged race.
It is. But in track, each person runs 50 meters and in the swim, in the pool, each participant swims 25 yards. And it goes all the way from, you know, real itty-bitty up to, you know, 21 years old. It's the bonding between the grandparent and that child and doing something together.
Our regular viewers know that I am a big supporter of intergenerational programs. That, to me, is the best of all, where a youngster can look at grandma and grandpa and feel connected to them and participate in their life. And as you know, that's a, that's a two-way street. It helps improve everybody's attitude.
Absolutely.
Now, we're going to be giving contact information, but before we put it up on the screen, is it easy to contact you and for people to make themselves available and to register?
Yeah, it's very easy. The best way to do it is to go to our website. Which is www.pasadena senioren center.org.
All one word, of course. Lowercase. Pasadena Senior Center.
Dot org.
Dot org.
And then follow the link to Senior Olympics.
I got you.
And that's, and it'll have email, it'll have phone numbers. We're extremely accessible.
Well, let's, a brief sketch, some of the games. You've mentioned 26 events, like bowling?
You start in the alphabet on A and you work down to E.
I see.
So start with archery.
Archery, alright.
Go to badminton, bowling, billiards.
Oh, this is, this is like a test here.
Golf, powerlifting, race walk, road walk, road race. And there is a difference between race walk and the road race. Swimming, softball, co-ed softball, track and field, table tennis, tennis, volleyball, wrestling, powerlifting.
Powerlifting, that's what I was thinking.
Cycling.
Fun.
And I must have missed one, but rope climb, push-ups, and pull-ups. So maybe that's, I think that's going to be off the course of the 26.
Well, let me give you a visual here. Aging in L.A. visited the swimming competition held at the AAF Rose Bowl Aquatic Center in Pasadena.
We're from Pahrumpi County Aquatic Masters and we are here supporting our Mewoc Indian sister, Zandra Belts. And Zandra is the only Native American swimmer in Pacific Masters. And this is an ancient drum, actually, and a Mewoc artifact. And when Zandra swims, we always play the drum for her so she can feel her ancient vibrations and swim to the joy and rhythm of the drum in the water.
but that doesn't stop her from taking part in the Games. We asked her what prompted her to start swimming.
I weighed so much and the doctor told me that if I didn't get the weight off, that I wouldn't see my 60th birthday. I wouldn't see my grandchildren. And so I've been practicing and making mistakes and doing well. And I think this is great for me because it gives me something to live for in life. I tell other people about the Senior Olympics. I'm visually impaired and it's called retinitis pigmentosis. And it's only 1,000 cases in the United States. They don't have a cure for it at the moment. I'm here to encourage other people to get involved regardless of from 9 to 99.
Wow, what a great time. That's a very effective person there. Good on Vivian.
Very inspiring.
Now, we'll see, talk to some other competitors later in the program, but it's not always about winning, is it? Sometimes people can sort of re-engage with life by being involved in sports.
Yeah, I think it's, it's that. It's about participating. I think that's the most important thing, that they get out there and do it. What we find, and I think, and I know Kathy would agree to it, are the friendships that are being developed through this and the camaraderie and we're...
That's a very important part.
Yeah. You could walk into a track, you know, 15 years ago and all of a sudden Kathy and Bert now have this whole other extended family in the track club. And I think that's, that's almost more important than, than winning the medal.
Are there volunteer opportunities too? I mean, every organization is short volunteers. I mean, someone, pardon the pun, can sort of dip their toe in, so to speak.
Absolutely. We've had a lot, a number of people that have volunteered, just wanting to see what it's like.
Right.
And then the next year they'll come out and do it. I think to some of it is, it's intimidating.
Well, sure.
You're exposing yourself.
Of course.
You know, you're putting yourself on the line. So that's a great way to, to just get your feet wet on.
Okay. Do you find yourself sort of planning your year around the various events? Yes?
Oh, yes.
Well, now, as a statewide organization, are the meets held all up and down the state?
They are, right now they're held in, I believe it's eight communities. Between, mostly here in Southern California. There are two in Northern California right now. And the other six here in Southern California.
Okay. Excuse me, it's time for a short break. When we return, we'll resume our discussion of the California State Senior Olympics. Please stay tuned, we'll be right back.
Hey, buddy! Don't you know you should never leave a cooking pan unattended? And a working smoke detector can warn you of a fire! Like the one behind me! My hero!
Next time, listen to the ball. Have a smoke detector and a fire extinguisher at work.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Before approaching an intersection, so that's why two wrong turns don't make a right turn!
Now let's learn about tailgating.
Hey, that's how I got my ticket.
You got a ticket for tailgating? That's not good. That can be really annoying.
Doesn't get you there any faster.
It leaves you no distance to break.
Which makes it easier to get into a crash.
And it also may increase your insurance premium.
And I hate tailgaters.
Tailgating causes crashes. Back off. Watch the road.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today, the California State Senior Olympics, held recently in the Los Angeles area. Our guests are event organizer Cynthia Rosedale and athlete Kathy Bergen. Thank you again for joining us. Well, we were just discussing not only the volunteer help that's needed to run something. I'm, tracking, it takes a lot of people. But this is, this is a dot org, this is a foundation, so donations are important as well.
We could not run, or do what we do, we couldn't run the event without significant sponsorship. And I would say probably 25% of the people who participate donate in some, and we're nonprofits, so it's all, it's all tax deductible.
Tax deductible, well, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it's, it's inexpensive to run.
I'm sure.
Our budget is about, it runs, depending upon a qualifying or non-qualifying year, but the budget runs about $90,000 to $95,000.
I got you. Well, that's a drop in the bucket for Nike.
We would love it, absolutely.
Well, Mr. Knight, if you're listening, this is a...
Please.
Actually, it's a good cause.
It's a great cause.
But with track and field, there's not much expense beyond a good set of sneakers and, and...
Well, I believe the expense to the organization is for the officials, for the venue.
Of course.
For the certification, I think it has...
No, I understand that. But for the individual competitor, I mean, if you're race walking, what do you need, a pair of shorts and a tank top, right?
Very unlike golf. We're golf, you know, equipment-wise.
Really expensive.
We're cycling. You know, some of our cyclists, their bikes are worth, in the neighborhood of $5,000.
I know. But they are amazing. These carbon fiber, weigh five pounds. It's really astonishing. Now, in the first half of our program, we watched the swimming competition. Let's take a look at senior athletes competing in racquetball, badminton, basketball, and 86-year-old Bill Tom competed in the World Wide Olympics in 1956. Then as a senior, he took up badminton.
I teach junior high school here for eight years. One of the colleagues, he played badminton. So at noon time, he said, "Hey, Mr. Tom, come and play some game at noon. We'll pay for ice cream after lunch." I was buying him ice cream all semester. Then the year I won the Taiwan, I learned a few things, just Asian game. I came back, he buying me ice cream.
It seems that they're having a good time.
Definitely. They love it. Absolutely. There's so many that look forward to it every year.
Well, I'm sure. And then, like you Kathy, you can look to, really having an edge when you hit that next up, age qualifying level.
The Pasadena Senior Games is always my favorite. I think because of the wonderful experience we had for the first time when I met Cynthia and several other, the competitors that I'm still seeing now.
Well, how many events do you participate in per year?
Track meets? Probably about 10 when I'm healthy.
Wow, that's great. Now, I, I would imagine you have to have some special health concerns. I mean, you want people to be fit, obviously, going into this, but, but sports injuries are common at any age.
Very common. And one of the prerequisites that we have at all the high-profile events is have medical, emergency medical team, is staff on site.
That's very important.
And they're hidden things. I mean, we have had a couple of people, we've lost a couple of people.
Right. But people shouldn't be intimidated by that.
Absolutely not.
You know, you get up in the morning and you can fall in the bathroom.
Yeah. I mean, the worst thing that happened this year is, is a woman basketball player broke a fingernail.
Oh, my God.
Not on one, that's, yeah.
A calamity.
It was, it was. For her, it was.
Well, before we leave, again, the contact information to reach you, Cynthia.
Is the website at www.pasadena senioren center.org. Or they can email me at cynthia r@pasadena senioren center.org.
Fabulous. Unfortunately, our time is up for today's Aging in L.A. program. Thanks so much to our guests from the California State Olympics program. Event organizer Cynthia Rosedale and world-class athlete Kathy Bergen. And now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. For older adults and seniors who want to stay healthy and independent, the National Institute of Health recommends four types of exercises. Strength and weight-bearing exercises to build muscle and increase metabolism. Balance exercises to improve posture, strengthen muscles, and help prevent falls. Stretching exercises to improve freedom of movement. Then endurance exercises such as walking and swimming to improve heart health and increase metabolism. Always, always check with your doctor before starting an exercise program. Now, if you are interested in trying a particular sport or activity, join a club and enjoy the company of like-minded adults who enjoy the same activity. Many clubs will offer you a free trial period so that you can find out if it's right for you. Find inexpensive or free exercise classes for older adults at your local senior centers, YMCA's, and community colleges. Try to be active for at least 30 minutes each day. Walking your dog, doing yard work, walking around the mall, and even doing housework or gardening will help. Gentle yoga and Tai Chi can be good for the mind as well as the body. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View Channel 35 so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life. And also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and your ideas for future programs. Please give us a call. The number's right there on your screen, area code 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas. We look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks so much for watching. We'll see you the next time. Cynthia, thank you so much for making time.
Illegal dumping? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed today.
L.A. City View Channel 35.
23rd, 2010. We're here in the John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Want to greet our fellow Angelenos who are here in council chambers, as well as those who are watching us on Channel 35 throughout the city's cable system, either live or during our rebroadcast in the evening. We're also available online, live and after the meetings, at la city dot O R G, O R G, excuse me, where we have live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. And we archive the past footage of all of our council meetings as well. Finally, we are available through telephone by using something called Council Phone, calling 213-621-CITY. And you can listen in to any of the proceedings of the City Council on the telephone. And we lastly can be watched or take testimony from our remote locations, both in Van Nuys City Hall in the San Fernando Valley and down in San Pedro by the harbor and San Pedro City Hall. And if you'd like to be heard today on any of the items that are before us, those items are listed in our agendas, which are made available to the public three days in advance or one day in advance for our special meetings. And those also have cards next to them, which you can fill out to speak before the City Council at the podium here, or from the podiums at Van Nuys and San Pedro City Hall. Thank you to those council members who are here on time. Council members Han, Rosendahl, and Zine. That is only four members, and it is six minutes after the hour, so the following council members are late. Council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Weezer, Corretz, Labange, Perry, Reyes, and Wesson. Mr. Smith is excused, Mr. Kukorian is excused, Mr. Parks is excused, arrived late. But we need those other council members to come down right away. Thank you to the public for your patience while we await those late council members, and please to the council if you can be reminded to be here at 10 o'clock pursuant to council rules, out of respect for the public and the city staff that is here on time. We're waiting for one more council member. Council members Alarcon, Reyes, and Wesson are still late. As soon as one of the three of them arrives, we will have a quorum. Two-thirds of our 15-member body, or 10 members, and we'll begin the meeting. Again, we're awaiting council members Alarcon, Reyes, and Wesson to begin our meeting. Reminder to please try to be here on time. It is now 10:10, and we are still awaiting quorum. Still waiting council members Wesson, Reyes, and Alarcon. This is our last quorum call for council members Alarcon, Reyes, and Wesson. Mr. Reyes is here, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Corretts moves, and Mr. Weezer seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, in time for the salute to the flag.
All right, if I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Zine, if you will lead us, please.
Please stand, place your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated.
Thank you. If we can please run through today's agenda. Colleagues, if I can turn your attention to the items before us.
Mr. President, commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are moved by Mr. Zine. I'll second them. Without objection, those will be approved. The first items on the agenda.
Items 1 through 12 are building and safety liens noticed for public hearing. The department reports that items 1, 4, and 8 should be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid. We do, however, have a card in on number 4.
Okay, we'll call that special for the card, and we'll move 1 and 8 be received and filed, as well as 4 after the public comment when we do take that up. We'll close the other public hearings. Any specials on those, colleagues? Seeing none, let's prepare the roll on the balance, and please tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 13 through 42 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 42 has two committee reports on file, and a motion is required.
All right, anybody wishing to move 42, Mr. Weezer?
Report, please.
Okay. Budget and Finance report will be moved by Mr. Weezer on 42. Ms. Han?
With that objection, continue 42 for a week.
42? Okay. That objection... We'll move that one. That would bring us to December 7th due to the council recess. We'll be in recess next week for the National League of Cities meeting. So two weeks? Okay. Make that December 7th, two weeks. For number 42. Correct? Is there no objection to that? Okay, no objection. Yes, Mr. Rosendahl and then Mr. Krikorian.
44 is special?
We're not quite there, but I will make sure when we're there. We're just items to 42 right now.
Okay.
Mr. Cardenas?
32.
32.
And I think Zine's.
Okay.
Zine said 36.
And Mr. Zine, thank you. There is Zine, 36. Other specials? Seeing none, let's go ahead. We do expect to have Mr. Parks. Let's hold the ordinances on the table until we have 12 members. On the balance, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 43 through 58 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, do we have cards on any of these? We do, we have cards on...
Special 44.
Hold on one second, Mr. Labange. Go ahead, Mr. Rosendahl.
44.
Do you have cards on 44 and any others?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the other public hearings. I know Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Labange both wanted to call that special as well. We'll make sure that that is called special. Other specials, Mr. Reyes?
Number 57, please.
57 for Mr. Reyes. Other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's go ahead, and let's hold 43 on the table as well as an order.
Can I ask the President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, 44, could Mr. Rosendahl and I both have it half-special to make one special?
Yeah, yeah, I now see you both have called it special.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome. Next, there's no other items. Let's go ahead. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Yeah, those are approved. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items 59 through 63 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
63 for Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you.
Do we have cards on any other ones?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearings. If nobody wishes to call those special, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. We'll send 64 forthwith without objection. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Cardenas before public comment for item number 63. And I understand that we have families members here on that item. So, Mr. Cardenas, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We have the family of the victim, Vartan Avatian, here with us. And I stand to ask that we offer a reward of $50,000 for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of the person or persons responsible for the death of 18-year-old Vartan Avatian on October 17th, 2010. And just over a month ago, somebody or some people took young Avatian's life, and he was killed on October 17th, 2010, at approximately 12:30 a.m., when he was shot while at El Michoacano, Tacostan, on Lancashire Boulevard and Sherman Way in North Hollywood, again at 12:30 a.m., in the middle of the night. The suspect was seen running to a nearby vehicle, described as a four-door compact which fled west on Sherman Way. If anyone have any information, please contact Detective Kevin J. Royce from North Hollywood Homicide, and you can call at 818-623-4075, or you can call 818-623-4016. Anyone wishing to remain anonymous should call Crime Stoppers at 800-222-TIPS. Otherwise, you can call, that number is 800-222-8477, or text 274637, which spells crimes on most keypads. All text messages should begin with the letters LAPD. Once again, we're putting out a reward motion, colleagues, for a $50,000 reward to apprehend, or to get information to apprehend the suspect or suspects who took the life of young 18-year-old Vartan Avatian on October 17th, 2010. If there's anyone, anyone with information, please, please contact the police department at those numbers. Once again, if you want to remain anonymous, you can do so. Mr. President, if we could have one of the family members speak?
Absolutely. And if I could just please ask folks to keep their conversations to a minimum or move them outside. Mr. Labange, if you would, and others. We do have the family members here, and we'd like to afford them the courtesy. Thank you so much for being here, and please, if you'd like to address this.
I just want to say that Vartan was the best brother I could ever ask for. And for them telling me that he was just, he died for just being in the wrong place at the wrong time, I would never wish this upon any family. And I please ask that we pass this motion for this reward, and maybe we could find out, somebody knows something, somebody's seen something of what happened. And for an innocent kid like this to just die for no reason, I just, I don't believe that this could ever happen. I just, I just hope that we could, you know, pass this reward motion, and that's it.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being here. Mr. Cardenas?
Once again, thank you so much, Mr. President. I would like to thank the family for everything that you've been doing and the cooperation you've given to the police department. And also, I'd like to ask the public once again, as you've just witnessed, the anguish and the tears of young Vartan's family, please, 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 do the right thing. If you can come forward, please, please do so as soon as possible, so there's nothing that anybody can do to bring young Vartan back. But at the same time, at the least, let's help this family bring closure to this situation where someone, somebody, some people took the life of this young man. So once again, public, please, please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now take a vote on the reward motion that is before us. Madam Clerk, could you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved, and we will send that to the mayor forthwith for his signature as soon as this meeting is done. Thank you very much again to the family, and thank you, Mr. Cardenas. That will take us to our general public comment. Now for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city. Sean Murphy is our first speaker. He will be followed by Daniel Wright. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, City Council. I want to wish you and my fans a happy, healthy Thanksgiving. And I hope we have a Hollywood Christmas parade this year due to the... I know the economy. I hope we're going to have a Christmas parade this year. 2011 is not going to be a good year. I predict it will not be a good year. More problems will arise. That's about it. Just have a good, healthy and healthy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will have the Christmas parade this Sunday. So thank you for those kind words. Larry King will be our grand marshal this year, and we look forward to seeing folks out on Hollywood Boulevard and Vine Street in Sunset. Daniel Wright is our next speaker. After that is Dr. Clyde Williams. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, council members. Daniel Wright of the Silverstein Law Firm on behalf of Kramer Metals, Eminaga Bay, and others. Council members, we wanted to give you specific notice of the filing of a new Brown Act case against the city and this council related to the September 8th, 2010 approval of the controversial Sloss and Central project. After the city advertised a public hearing in the Los Angeles Times for two weeks that stated that the public hearing would occur on September 8th, instead, the city put the project on the September 7th meeting agenda, and the city failed to put the item on the September 8th agenda, the very item advertised in the LA Times as scheduled for September 8th. Despite the filing of a cure and correct letter with the city, there was a refusal to cure and correct. Accordingly, a new Brown Act case has been filed, not only to nullify the September 8th action, but to seek declaratory and injunctive relief to end the city's practice of failing to place hearings that are noticed in newspaper on the same identical agenda. This has been an ongoing problem with the city, and has occurred on more than one occasion. In addition, this lawsuit will seek additional declaratory and injunctive relief to end the council's practice of utilizing special meetings to give only 24 hours' notice for routine business when it should be advertised under the Brown Act for a period of 72 hours. In addition, the lawsuit will seek injunctive and declaratory relief to end the council's practice of delegating the call of special meetings to the city clerk instead of having the chair of the appropriate legislative body call the meeting. And finally, the lawsuit will delve into the issue of the clerk not accurately recording the votes of this city council through your electronic voting system. We'd encourage you to look at the lawsuit carefully, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After that is Melrose Larry Green. Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, 411 Fiber Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. This evening, there will be 10 people getting together for three hours to set an agenda. Timely notification for our General Board meeting of the LA 32 Neighborhood Council. That sounds pretty good. We will probably allocate maybe $3,000 over the General Board. However, we're also going to be notified that we've lost a lot of things because we've lost $1 million from the Metro de-obligation of a project within El Sereno. We lost another probably half a million dollars from Metro's call for projects because it was removed by the Bureau of Engineering. And we'll probably lose another half a million dollars in projects within El Sereno or LA 32 for the Highway Safety Improvement Program. Why? Because nobody told us that there was a problem with any of these, or that there was a call for projects. Supposedly, we are a element of the city council, or at least the city government of the city of LA. But we don't get notified in a timely fashion. DWT's notifications are kind of ridiculous. But even within our own area, we're not told when projects are going to be called for. And we can make projects. We have a whole list of projects in 90032. But if we don't know when the deadlines are, we don't know what the application submittals require, how can we provide? However, there is one timely notification that we all know about, and that's March of next year. And we're planning on helping with proper notification, doing something about our losses. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Melrose Larry Green. And after that will be Arnold Sachs. Good morning.
Good morning. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
You too.
I got to tell you, I haven't, I've never been in such a bad situation that I am in right now. I've lived in the same apartment on Las Palmas since 1989. Lawrence Greenblatt is my real name. 1989. On November 11th, I got a call from my manager that he wanted to go look in the apartment and check out the, fix the carpeting, fix the ceiling, and fix the tiling that I complained about six years ago on November 11th. November 12th, I got a three-day notice to perform or quit because of two pianos that I had since 1989, and a cat that I've had since 1999. I met the cleaning provision of the free perform or quit. I'm trying to get rid of one of the pianos. I was served November 14th or 15th with a notice for eviction, unlawful detainer. I've already spent my own money to respond to that, and I want to talk to the whole city council and the people in Los Angeles to know that there are dishonest and there are greedy landlords, and dishonest and greedy managers, and dishonest and greedy property people that will take advantage of tenants like me. I am fighting this. This is bogus. I pay my rent all the time. I'm not a bad tenant. And by the way, other neighbors in the apartment have dogs and cats, number one. And number two, when I moved in, I was told that cats were allowed to be had. So I've got some help. So I got some help from Tom Labange's office, and thank you. I'm going to go to the LA Housing Department later. But I welcome any suggestions from anybody, particularly Councilman Garcetti, Councilman Weesar, Councilman Cardenas, and Councilman Zine and Labange, on any lawyers they might have, because I am on the verge of being thrown out of my apartment. Had I gone away for two weeks, like I usually do at this time of the year, I might have come back with a lock on my door and all the belongings on the street. This is dangerous. This is insane, and I am not going to sit for this. Here are pictures. Folks, 21 years is a long time. Please help me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
You come to the ropes, please, so we can help assist you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Appreciate it. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that, we will go to Van Nuys City Hall, and Bruce Darian will be our first speaker there. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Arnold Sacks. I wanted to reflect on last week's action that you took regarding the appointment of the commissioner that you turned down because the paperwork wasn't inclusive. And I checked, and the day before, the airport commissioner was voted in by the council. And I was wondering, how many other commissioners have had, have or had not had their paperwork correct? But I really, it stuck on the airport this week. In Wednesday's paper, in the opinion page, there's an editorial that says, "Shut up and be scanned." And letters to the editor refer to what they won't see at LAX. And that's regarding the new terminal that's going to be built that would block sightlines for the, for the air traffic controllers. So on one hand, you have complaining about body scans, and on the other hand, you have sightlines that are going to be blocked by the air traffic controllers, which brings me to another point about LAX. Because in Wednesday's newspaper, where they're monitoring upgrades, the airport grew a hump. Pay attention, Mr. Rosendahl, they're expanding. This is the diagram put out on 11/18/08, and it shows this concourse going from the Bradley Terminal to the Midfield concourse. In this picture, it has two humps. It grew a hump. And they say they're not going to build the second hump. So what the hell is going on at the airport? It's only $10 billion worth of work. I'd like to point out on today's agenda, item 52, next year at this time, you're going to be in Phoenix, Arizona for the League of Cities Conference, an exposition. What about the boycott? And finally, yesterday, a couple days ago, I went over to City Hall East to look up some documents on the bulletin board. You know, there's documents dated back to April and March of this year? That's appalling. Get on it.
Mr. Bruce Darian is our next speaker in Van Nuys, and after that is Donna Perman.
Good morning, City Council. I wanted to thank the people of, or, excuse me, I wanted to thank, I wanted to wish the people of Los Angeles a happy Thanksgiving, as well as the council. We have a lot to be thankful for in this country, and the people that have served in our armed forces, the people that have given their lives, and that have been injured in battle, and the people that serve our nation on a daily basis. However, we also have to protect this country from what's going on with the pilvering of our resources, with the fraudulent activity that goes on throughout the city, the state, and the nation. In particular, our violence that's been plaguing Los Angeles for many years, Los Angeles has been complacent over this. I'm running for Congress of the United States. I believe it's a federal issue, that the federal government has a right to intervene here, and actually has a duty to enforce the laws to stop this violence. My condolences go out to this Armenian family who's lost their son. There's been a longstanding battle between Hispanics and Armenians. It's a terrible situation, has to stop. The $50,000 is not enough reward money on any murder in the city of Los Angeles, and more needs to be done. I've come here many years over fraudulent activities in public contract, in public works jobs, and the fraudulent activity of contractors, and bid rigging, and scamming their payroll, and the falsification of contracts, and change orders, and so forth. And this is, this is, is, goes on all the time here in Los Angeles. So once again, I'm here before you as the council that more needs to be done, and that I'll be working hard as a congressman to see that the federal government takes a much stronger action towards violence here in the country. I, it was nice to see Councilman Labange on Hollywood Boulevard last week, and look forward to being at the Hollywood Christmas Parade, and hope many people will turn out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darian. Donna Perman is next. She's also in Van Nuys City Council Chambers. Then Frank Cheftel is here in the front chambers. Good morning, Donna.
Good morning, Mr. Garcetti. Mister, anyway, you will miss my, yeah. Yeah, Marion will be next. Anyway, you will miss my 30th anniversary in federal government next Tuesday, and my birthday on Saturday. Anyway, I didn't hear what, it was one or two weeks. Hopefully, you'll tell me after I'm done. No matter how, that you'll be gone. No matter how many cost-effective measures, anyway, propositions that raise taxes, our city will still be in debt as long as the city council is working for the CRA. I am against redevelopment, taking public money for private uses instead of development using private money for private use. We need to build that bill, but correctly. We don't need to make our basic city services go broke. It's not the city employees' pension that's the problem, but the CRA sucking all our money away. It's the city council and our mayor misusing our money. It's the CIO and the high-priced managers with extra perks. Our city council, our mayor with their extra perks. It's the MTA, LA DOT, who won't put buses that work correctly on the street, buses that run sporadically, so you never know when it's going to come by. I'm against the fact that the paper passes are next to impossible to buy. I have to buy my EZ Pass, good for LA DOT Metro, only on one day. It will sell out in one day. Why should anyone take public transit? We couldn't even accommodate everyone, especially the disabled. It's ridiculous. If we spend all our money on rail projects, our streets won't get paved. Why don't you make all city government, not just libraries, have a sales tax? That way, we'll save our basic city services, except DWP. We, they do a great service out there, the city employees, and we should be out there thanking them, and not worrying about if they, if the benefits they get, which they deserve, by the way. Anyway, I'm gonna, just let me know whether it's one week or two weeks, you're going to be gone.
It's just for two days of the week, next week. Frank Cheftel, and a happy birthday, by the way, Donna. Frank Cheftel is our next speaker here, and then Marion Fogler in Van Nuys.
Great. Thank you for being here. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Hope you all have a great holiday. Mr. Garcetti, thank you for acknowledging me coming down here instead of Van Nuys, where I usually come from. Actually, took the metro down, had a good ride down. I encourage everybody to do that. It's great, the public transportation, and we should use it more often. I've heard a couple previous speakers call out and ask for the city council's help. I've done that a few times. Mr. Garcetti, you were very responsive, and I appreciate you very much in putting me in contact with my councilman, Mr. Labange. Yet, still, nothing has gotten resolved, and I'm here once again to kind of remind you of my situation, because you do have a vote coming up, I know, Ms. Han, and maybe you're a little aware of my situation with, which is, it's a, it's an issue of where my paperwork was filed when I filed back in 2007. I did it the right way. I was ill, and I opened up. I went to Mr. Labange in 2006, and he was very supportive and encouraging, sent me to see Captain Sweet in North Hollywood. I met with Councilwoman Gruhl at the time, and everybody said, "You're the kind of person we know is going to do it right, and we support you." Now, flash forward, they're saying that I filed my paperwork in the wrong office. I went to Van Nuys. Well, I'm from Van Nuys, I'm from North Hollywood. I went to the constituent services. They accepted my paperwork in October, a month before the deadline. If I had gone to the wrong office, all they needed to say was, "Mr. Cheftel, you need to go downtown and file." Instead, they took my paperwork, allowing me to believe that everything had been taken care of, and I was registered. Flash forward, everything's been fine, and now in June, the city clerk tosses it back, saying, "You registered in the wrong place." Well, they had already investigated that and determined that it was the city staff that inadvertently misdirected my paperwork. They put that in public documents generated by the city, they admit they made the mistake. So I'm in this limbo where they've removed me before they made eligibility. We're not being sued, and I just need help in getting us back on that list. We are continuing to operate. We've had no issue. The city clerk sends me to the city attorney, the city attorney sends me to the city clerk, and neither of them will come in the room together to talk with me. I'm hoping that somebody will help me with this situation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cheftel. Mr. Labange?
I hope so. Have a staff member speak with him. Thank you.
Mr. Labange, appreciate that. Marion Fogler is our next speaker in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Good morning. Donna didn't get to speak a couple weeks ago. You can't get through to downtown, just like, you know, down here in Van Nuys. It's a big spread here, folks. So I don't know why we couldn't have our own city down here, why we couldn't have our own representation down here. They're down there, and they're, they're building and expanding continuously down there, and they're depreciating, deteriorating the whole valley here, folks. And you're all getting ripped off, because you people went to the ballot box and voted for Prop 25. So you're all going to get ripped off more, and you're going to get ripped off more and more. They're going to raise your sales tax, your registration tax, your income tax. You're going to get hit bad, because Jerry Brown's going to do it. You know, this is the very guy that raised all the taxes in the first place, okay? The cities? You know, they got their money back. They don't have to worry about redevelopment being, being, being taken out. Lock, stock, and barrel, there's no, there's no accountability where that money's going. There's no control over CRA anymore. You people just handed it over to them, the cities and the counties. And Howard Jarvis allowed it. He wanted it. He voted for it. You're stupid to do that, to keep, put all your, and then they're talking about getting rid of the death penalty? Well, then they're playing God, the murderers, huh? What about poor Ronnie Shazan? It's okay to go ahead and murder people, huh? You're legalizing murder? That's not a killing. That's murder, cold-blooded murder. Okay? Just like the poor boy who was murdered here on Halloween. That's cold-blooded murder. Are you guys going to allow that to get away with that? You're going to allow victims to be, no justice for them? Because you want to play, don't want to play God? What about God giving us the right to, it's in the Ten Commandments, the right to, to, the Tao shall not murder?
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. That will end our public comment period. We'll go to items now that were called special by cards and/or council members. Our first is item number four, and Mr. Murphy, if you'd like to come back forward on item number four, please.
I, I support the soreness, all hiring. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We had moved to receive and file number four. If there's no objection, we will receive and file that. Next item called special, please. That brings us to item 32 called special for Councilmember Cardenas. Okay. Mr. Cardenas, we have item 32 called special.
Thank you, Mr. President. We could have the Department of Animal Services representatives come up and the specialists who can shed some light on this particular important gift. Members, what we have here is an opportunity for us to remember, during any time, the city of Los Angeles or any government entity should be welcoming and making it very easy for donations to be given. And item 32 is relevant, and I would like to say thank you to the Banfield, the Pet Hospital for their $87,500 gift, which is a donation of flea and tick treatments, and that's something that's very, very important. Certainly, the safety of our public and safety of the animals in our city is, in fact, a city responsibility. But for us to get a gift of eighty, the equivalent of $87,500 worth of a gift from the Banfield, the Pet Hospital, that's something that we should be saying thank you about. Yet, at the same time, I think it would be relevant and appropriate that we take a couple of minutes of this council meeting to remind the public and thank the public for their thoughts, but also welcome the public to give donations, and perhaps have the department explain what this gift means to us, and then use that as an opportunity to remind everybody what is the process for gifts such as this, or any gift to any department, but specifically to this department, that what it has to do with the well-being of our community and our animals.
The, in terms of making a donation to the department, all they have, all people have to do is...
Your name and title, please, for...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know who you are.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Brenda Barnett, General Manager. All we have to do is know that someone wants to make a gift, and we will facilitate. We will go through any steps, gifts of a certain amount, go before the animal commissioners, and then they come to you for approval, but for the most part, just let us know, and we are happy to have the help for our animals. Dr. Prupus, our head vet, may want to say something about what this actually means for the animals.
What, before you point out this particular gift, can people give anonymous gifts?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the reason why I think that's important, I would imagine that people could conclude the truth of the matter is, if we can accept anonymous gifts, then at the same time, if you do not wish to remain anonymous, we're still not going to make it cumbersome, we're still not going to make it some convoluted process where people say, "Forget it. I don't want to give the gift after all. It's too complicated." Is it straightforward and simple?
Absolutely. Straightforward and simple. They can call me, email me, brenda.barnett@lacity.org. We will make it absolutely easy. The other way that people can give to the department is to come and adopt a wonderful family member.
Okay. But also, somebody could actually walk up to a counter at any one of our many facilities, and they could actually say, "I was passing by, I keep forgetting to call or email, I want to give a gift, who should I talk to?" That person will be able to help them and make sure that they can get it done quickly and easily.
Absolutely. Any of, any of the people who work at our shelters will be able to accept the gift.
Okay. But please don't show up with a big bag of cash. Now, that might be a little too complicated. We appreciate the gesture, but we need a little bit more formality than just showing up to a counter and saying, "Here's a couple of bushels of cash."
But even if they do that, we'll get double counting going right away.
Exactly. But, but anyway, I'm sure there are many, many ways in which people want to give a gift, but I just want to make sure we took an opportunity to explain how easy it is, and it is easy. But on this particular gift, what is this gift, and what does it mean?
Dr. Prupus?
Dr. Jeremy Prupus, Chief Veterinarian. I just want to make clear that this is, this was a donation that was in partnership with Banfield, the Pet Hospital, and Siva Animal Health. And this is Dr. Elizabeth Hodgkins from Siva Animal Health. Basically, what they were very generous in doing is giving us over 9,000 doses of product that is a topical, spot-on product that will kill fleas and ticks and lasts a month. And previous to this, when an animal came in with fleas and ticks, the only product we really are able to afford to use, given the number of animals that we take in every year, is a flea and tick spray, which is not nearly as effective. So the fact that they've given us this incredible product has, has meant a world of difference for the animals that have come into the shelters.
And when people hear the word flea, or the word tick, they just kind of get all itchy or what have you, but, but this also has a lot to do with, this has a lot to do with the health of the animals, right? Because fleas and ticks can actually carry diseases and could infect one animal, especially if the animals are confined in a confined space where there might be 50 or 100, 150 animals. It might have a negative, a bad effect on the entire population, right?
It not only affects all the animals in the shelter, it also affects, potentially can affect people. There are certain diseases that fleas and ticks carry that are zoonotic and that can go to people. So it's a, it is even a public safety issue as well.
And also, when people go to adopt a dog, or a cat, or what have you, they don't want to bring home a bunch of critters, they just want to bring that one pet, right? So we don't want or need any surprises. So this is something, even though I might be having a little fun with it, this is something that's not only about doing the right thing, thank you so much, but at the same time, it's about the health and welfare of the people involved at our shelters, and also the animals, and also the people who are kind enough to adopt them, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And anything else you'd like to add about the gift?
I'd just like to add one more thing about how to make a gift, which I totally failed to mention, is you can go to our website, Los Angeles Animal Shelters, and there's an easy way to make a donation right online. And I would just like to personally say thank you. It makes such a difference for the animals, it's unbelievable.
You're very welcome, Brenda. I'm a native Southern Californian, born in Burbank and grew up in, in Linwood, and I have to say that I've seen such a transformation in the shelters over all of the years that I have spent in, in this area. And Dr. Prupus, and everyone involved in the shelters are doing a tremendous job. We're at Siva, very, very pleased, proud to be able to assist in very important work in public health work, as well as animal health. As a veterinarian, 32 years, graduate of Davis, I can tell you that it really matters As a veterinarian, 32 years, graduate of Davis, I can tell you that it really matters to me to know that animals are more comfortable in the city, and that's the least we can do for them. And encourage all of my fellow Southern Californians, please, if you can donate to the shelters, if you can help the animals in any way, if you can adopt, please adopt. Give a good home to an animal that certainly deserves it. And if you can't adopt, and you've got a few extra dollars, it'd be great to see that money supporting the health and welfare of these animals and the efforts to adopt them out. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. And once again, this is a tremendous gift. And again, it's gonna help with the health, welfare, and safety of our animals and of all the human beings who are kind enough to take care of them.
The last thing is that actually the Siva Animal Health was also kind enough to donate all the product for the LAPD canine units as well.
Excellent. Once again, thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, um, please say. This is a great Thanksgiving gift for the animals. Let me just see if I understand this. This is a value of $87,500, and it's from Banfield, the Pet Hospital, and manufacturer CEVA Animal Health.
CEVA Animal Health is the manufacturer, yes. And the donation was facilitated by Banfield, yes.
That's just fabulous. Now, what is the difference in this particular, um, what is it, a liquid or how is it administered to the cats?
People are gonna think I set you up for this, but...
No, no, no.
Thank you so much for the question.
No, let me just say this, first of all, for full disclosure. I have three cats, and I'm looking forward to our new law to make it five, and Brenda and I are working on that. And two of them were, you know, sheltered ones that were like six weeks old when we got them. One of them, the female, is always full of ticks. I mean, of, you know, I just can't get rid of it. And I put the collar on, I do the this and I do the that. And this morning, I was trying to put another collar on her, and of course she ran, and I couldn't get it on. What will this do for her?
Now, she has ticks or she has fleas?
Fleas.
Okay, good. It's unusual for cats to have ticks.
No, it's fleas.
Yes.
Poor thing, and it's like forever.
If I can have a mailing address for you, I will see that you have a lifetime supply of the best product for your cat.
How does it work? How do you administer it?
Well, like many of the products that have been available for the last 15 years when there was a revolution in parasite control, it is a topical. It's a small amount of liquid that just goes on the surface of the pet's skin and then completely translocates across the surface of the animal and then protects for a full 30-plus days by killing on contact. It's a bad, it's a bad thing to land on a Vectra or First Shield-treated cat or dog. It's a contact kill for the flea. The molecules go immediately into the nervous system of the parasite, and they're dead within just a very short period of time. So it's, it's a fantastic thing we can do for dogs and cats today that we couldn't do in decades past. And believe me, 33 years ago, when I graduated from Davis, it was grim trying to deal with parasites. It was, it was very, very difficult.
So this, this really works?
Absolutely.
And Brenda...
You can test it.
Great. Brenda, how are you gonna publicize it to all the folks who have cats and dogs right now that are really in the need of it? How do we get the word out?
Well, I hope that the information about this gift and how important to us it is for the animals will also help people to think that they can go to their veterinarian and they can ask for the product as well.
Mm-hmm. And they can go to the shelter now and get it for free?
No, we're using it on the shelter animals to make them more comfortable.
But what if you've got a shelter animal, and could you bring it back to the shelter?
No, we can't do that.
Okay. But we'll treat it before it goes out. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and take a vote on this. Thank you very much to all here at the table. Appreciate your guidance and your commitment. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. We've had a request to take item 44 out of order, and that came out of Transportation Committee. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. So, yeah, so we have cards on that. Mr. Rosendahl, would you like to hear the cards first?
What I'd like to do is just make a statement and then go right to the cards.
All right.
Okay. Yeah, of course. Tom, you can make all the statements you want. Today, item 44, colleagues, is about the city agreeing to have all mobile trucks posted with the letter grade, just how our restaurants are posted. You know, A, B, C, D, you put it out there. What we are discussing is whether or not the trucks will have to post the grades that will be given to them by the county. What is important to note is that even if we don't act today, these county health inspectors will still take place. You know, after the public comment, I'd like the city attorney, Judy Wheel, to come on up and Tony Powell from the L.A. County Health Department staff to come up. Maybe they could come up now, and they could just turn their chairs around and listen to the public here. So how about Judy and Terrence come on up to the table and listen to what the public comments are gonna be as well as to be able to respond to it? So come on up. If we don't want the letter grade posted, the trucks will still have to abide by the state and county health code regulations. The county will still conduct an inspection, and a score will be provided and posted on the county's website. Frankly, I believe it to the residents to make sure that we have information to decide if they want to eat safely from a certain truck or not. They need this letter grade to make the decision. And I know they're gonna speak public comment from the entertainment industry about the flexibility they need, obviously, when they're on locations, when they're, when they're doing their work. And Ms. Labange might have a motion that we could support, but we do wanna move forward with this today. So if I could ask for the public comment now, Mr. President, public comment, and then we'll have staff...
Mr. Labange, and then we'll take public comment. Mr. Labange?
I just follow the lead of our fine chair of transportation and thank the city attorney and thank the representative of county health. We do have one amendment that I'm gonna ask, a motion to apply this ordinance only to food facilities that sell food directly to individual consumers. This alleviates a challenge that we have as it relates to food services for our very big and we encourage it movie industry. Anyway, public comment.
Thank you. Our first speaker will be Nicole Shaheen from the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. Always good to see you. Arnold Sachs will follow her. Good morning.
Good morning, Council President and members of the City Council. On behalf of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, we are very supportive of your efforts to better regulate the mobile food trucks in the city, but urge that an exception be made for those that serve as private catering trucks on location food shops like the motion that Councilmember Labange just introduced. As you know, in recent months, we have seen a significant increase in mobile food vendors in Hollywood and areas throughout the city. Whereas these trucks used to concentrate on industrial areas where there was a lack of restaurant options, they've now moved into central Hollywood, parking adjacent to our existing restaurants. The Chamber believes that increased regulation and control over these mobile food vendors through a grading system such as the one proposed is a good first step in helping to make the restaurant industry more competitive with food trucks. However, adoption of the proposed county ordinance as is could have unintended consequences for our film studios. As you may know, there are approximately 140 mobile units that provide catering on location at film and TV shoots and on studio lots. These trucks do not sell any food to the public whatsoever. The studio catering trucks have been supportive of health inspections, letter grades, and food safety, and have been inspected and graded regularly by the County Health Department for many years. Our concern is that adoption of this ordinance and the new inspection system would take studio catering trucks from the Food and Milk Division of the County Health Department, where they've been for many years, and move them into the vehicle inspection program, where the inspections are very different and much more stringent. The Chamber believes that studio food trucks serve an entirely different role than the gourmet taco trucks, gourmet and taco trucks that this ordinance is aimed at, and that this is completely different than the studio catering truck situation. To this end, the Chamber supports the efforts of the City Council to better regulate the food truck industry. However, we ask that you provide an exemption for mobile catering such as the amendment offered by Councilmember Labange. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker.
He's gone.
Okay. He's gone.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Bruce Hecker is our next speaker. And he'll be followed by Ray Bittiness.
Thank you for letting me speak before you. I represent the Motion Picture and Television Mobile Catering Association. My name is Bruce Hecker. This is Ray. We're co-presidents of the association. Our business is to service the motion picture location shoots in Los Angeles. For the most part, we provide breakfast, lunch, and dinner to, with approximately 150 trucks representing 25 companies, which also represents about 900 employees in the city of Los Angeles. Most importantly, we have been inspected by the County Health Department for years. I have been in business for 30 years and have always been inspected. We receive letter grades for our commissaries where our food is prepared and number grades on our trucks. For the most part, our commissaries and trucks receive high marks. The present system under Food and Milk Division of the County of Los Angeles Health Department is working well, and we don't understand why the present system needs to be fixed. Unlike the gourmet food trucks, we do not ride around the park and park, we do not ride around a park for several hours selling food to the general public. Our business model is to contract with a studio production company, do our preparation in our commissary, load our trucks up, go to a permitted site, park, prepare, and serve a meal. Often, we serve several hundred people within a very strict time limit, 20 to 30 minutes. We have predetermined unionized workers, we have predetermined unionized workers to feed. The workers in the unions and producers demand the highest quality food prepared in a safe way. And if we do not give them that on a regular basis and do not pass our county health expectations, we would not be in business, and we would not be standing here today. While we do not like to criticize our municipal workers, I can tell you that the opportunity to have the county's process was given to us in the form of an outreach letter after the board of supervisors had passed the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. If I can ask you to conclude, or if Ray wants to pick up where you left off? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ray Bittiness. I'm with Chef Robert Catering. We are a motion picture TV catering company. We basically do projects throughout the United States from, we just completed Transformers 3. We're also on another large, big-budget movie here in Los Angeles. We work on Extreme Maker throughout the U.S. The system works well. Mr. Terrence Powell has really been great and spent time on the phone with me and also last night. We have seven trucks. We have seven mobile food facility trucks. We have scored straight A's, hundreds on all the trucks. You can look us up on the County Health Department. Each time, we've scored an A and 100 points on all the last three years. Our mobile, not mobile, but our commissary scored 100, no, it scored a 99, and here's our letter grade. I just wanted to say, do not pass the ordinance. It's in current form. It allows studios, films, and L.A. County Health to sit down and develop an inspection process that accomplishes what the county wants to without seriously impacting film in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will end our public comment to the City Council. We have Mr. Reyes for the first time, and then we'll come back to Mr. Reyes.
Just wanna read this for the record. Madam City Attorney, motion to apply ordinance only to mobile food facilities that sell food directly to individual consumers. Thank you.
Not yet. Let's just hold that for a second. I would like, I know Mr. Reyes is gonna speak.
Yeah, let's go in order, folks. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker. Yes.
You can respond first.
Okay, Mr. Reyes is first.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues. Just for the sake of clarity, we just heard from folks at the Speaker saying that this approach would be more arduous, be more punitive. My understanding is that by adopting this ordinance, we're essentially just opening the door for the county to come in and do its health inspections in coordination with the city? Am I being too simplistic?
Deputy City Attorney Judith Wheel, Mr. Terrence Powell can respond to that on behalf of the county, but just so that we have a framework here, the County of Los Angeles enforces public health laws in the city of L.A. So it is my understanding, which Mr. Powell can speak to, is regardless of city action on this draft ordinance, the county will require catering trucks to register and be inspected and will award a letter grade. If the city does not enact this ordinance, the only result would be that the trucks will not have to post that letter grade. The county will put the letter grade or the number grade on its website. So the effect, the practical effect of enacting the draft ordinance would be to require all mobile food facilities to post the grade that they receive from the county. And having said that, I will defer to Mr. Powell of the county.
Please.
Good morning, members of the City Council. Terrence Powell, I'm with Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. We currently inspect all mobile food facilities, including those that have customers in the motion picture industry. The state law does not differentiate a mobile food facility that provides retail sales to the public or chooses to contract with a motion picture catering studio. At the end of the day, they're all customers, and they all consume food. Having said that, I think we need to clarify several issues. There are two types of catering operations. The first and most common are those that operate out of fixed facilities, out of a building, very much like a restaurant, except that they take food to a customer. Those operators are currently graded along with all other types of food service that is in a fixed building. The mobile industry, which comprises carts, trucks, trailers, and the like, is what's proposed now. There are no new standards in terms of the inspection. The standards are set by the state. The requirements for compliance are also set by the state. The only thing that's happening now is that we are telling the consuming public, whether they happen to be actors on a set, whether they happen to be customers in the street or anyone else, simply what our findings are on inspections that we currently conduct.
So, Madam Attorney, so we are just requiring that those that are mobile on city streets have this letter?
The ordinance actually will require that the letter grade be posted on all mobile facilities, wherever they are, on the street or on a lot or anywhere else.
Okay. Does this restrict them as to where they can go? No.
There's no restriction except whatever a local city may impose.
And we're not taking any action in that regard today?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, so just to take it a step further, because the industry, of course, there's, it's very important to keep Hollywood and keep filmmaking in L.A. On location, on location is the issue, right?
Right.
Okay. The gentleman that spoke earlier was wondering about the flexibility when they're on location in terms of how we deal with this issue. Is it gonna be any different on location than it is right now?
What I would say is that whatever the, whatever the compliance rate, whatever the standards are prior to grading, remain exactly the same. As I mentioned, the only thing that we are doing here is simply telling the public what the inspection findings are. But the standards have not changed, so I don't recall any movie sets being closed down prior to grading right now.
Yeah, but some of them are nervous that you're moving it from one group and category within the County Health Department to another. That might be suggesting more restrictions or more red tape or more inflexibility. Help me on that one.
Well, we're a large organization, and we have a unit that has been dedicated to vehicle inspections for the last 20 years. With respect to the motion picture caterers, it is inspected by our Food and Milk Division, but the main reason was not for any differences, but that they also have fixed catering sites, which are also inspected by Food and Milk.
Fixed is easy enough, but when it's not fixed? Say, for instance, you know, there's some location, and they put a grill out, and they start making stuff, you know, good food that way, it's not in a truck and all of that. But obviously, they want their actors and everybody involved in the film to get a good, healthy meal. I mean, I don't wanna see any flexibility constraint issues for the industry. And you give me assurance that won't be the case.
What the assurance that I give is that no one will get sick. My job is not that the food has to taste good, but that it cannot get anyone ill. And with respect to that, the state's standards are designed on that purpose. There are restrictions for how food is prepared and where food is prepared. Those existed prior to grading. They exist now.
Okay, saying that, do you go on location now and rate them as you move along and would it change any of what you've been doing?
We inspect mobile facilities wherever we find them.
Mm-hmm. And, but you don't have an inflexible mindset when they're on set somewhere in location and, you know, they have a grill out and they're not in a truck and they don't have this and don't have that. I mean, they're feeding their folks.
Well, I understand that. I think if you're talking inflexibility, I think our track record speaks to that, that we have not been inflexible. Our goal has been at all times to be transparent, both in terms of how we conduct inspections, but also the results of those. Having said that, we did recognize that catering business is a different sort of food service than, say, a restaurant.
Right.
But there are attendant issues that are very similar. You can talk to any restaurateur and they would like us not to come in during their rush hour. Sometimes that happens. We have to look and see how food is prepared, and unfortunately, that happens when there's a rush hour. I don't see that to be inflexibility, but we have to see candid operation. What I would like to point out, though, is that to date, I don't think anyone from the catering business that's mobile has witnessed us closing down a set or anything like that. And the point is, is that we're not doing anything different other than telling the public what we find.
Well, I know Mr. Labange is up next.
Mr. Labange, actually, Mr. Kretz is next, and then we have Mr. Reyes and Mr. Labange. Mr. Kretz.
Yeah, well, in terms of the film industry, it looks like there's some regulations that could cause them trouble, like regulations that require a bathroom to be within two-hundred feet, which doesn't necessarily work on film shoots where, when the bathroom's further away, they drive people or shuttle them to the restrooms, and the inability to set up a buffet line. How can we do this in such a way that we don't alter the way the film industry works because we're not trying to add any difficulties for them and make it more difficult to shoot in Los Angeles? In fact, we're trying very aggressively to do the opposite. Is it our proposed regulations that need to be changed? Is it state law that needs to be changed? What do we need to do to allow them to continue to work as they have?
Well, I don't think there's been any discussion about not allowing them to continue what they do. I think the concern, very candidly, is that some operators don't want to have disclosure and would rather not have that as a public airing of their laundry, if you will. With respect to restrooms, I did commit to the industry that I would meet with them to see if there was something to be done that would allow for an exception to the state law. So essentially, I'm not changing any of the rules that have been, not been in place already. Those rules are there and they fared pretty well.
So the regulations that would not permit a buffet line?
The regulations that would, let me give you some clarity. Any facility can serve a customer outside. Many of you have probably went to a restaurant and they've served you on their patio, but none of you will be a witness to them cooking outside, other than on an open-air barbecue pit, because that is what state law requires. And that is the only difference here.
So where does this leave us?
Well, in my opinion, it leaves us exactly where it was before we had a motion for grading. The standards have not been changed. Our behavior is not going to change. We're in the business of compliance. The rules that we are enforcing have been in effect for the better part of twenty years. The only thing that would be different here is that you would be giving the public the ability to know what we found. I would also offer that state law requires currently that the inspection report be available for anybody that walks up to a truck, a restaurant, or a market. It is to be available at that point as well.
So other than the letter grading, we're not intending to do any different enforcement at all?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker for a second time, then Mr. Labange for a second, and Mr. Rosendahl for a third.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I'm listening intently. We keep saying we want to embrace business and support business, and film in L.A. is a big industry in Los Angeles, but I wanted to explore this a little bit. When the county health process was defined, when it was structured and implemented, did we have the opportunity to have, for example, Film L.A. folks, people that work with us with the film industry, because catering and food and all that's integral to that, to the notion of desirability of being here, were we able to carve out a process for them so that we can speak to how we can facilitate without violating or taking it from the spirit of your intent as a health code, health standards?
Well, I think if you're getting at changing state law, that is a function of lobbying and participating in the process. The motion picture industry itself has lobbyists that attend many of the food meetings in Sacramento, and from those meetings and from legislation that is passed are the laws that I enforce.
Well, I'm not really intending to look at the state law because, obviously, it's going to have to go by the process you described, but looking at the level underneath that, when you begin to interpret state law and you start implementing state law in that realm of work, were we able to have folks from the Film L.A. industry to work with you on implementation?
Well, I think the county has a history of meeting with all elements of the industry. I myself have met with the better part of forty to fifty studio execs and independent producers about eight years ago when there was an issue with craft services, which was an unlicensed element of the film industry that was providing food. And we didn't meet with them and we did negotiate terms that I thought were appropriate and still maintain public safety. I would still maintain that same posture of being open to suggestions and processes.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember, I understand that Mr. Powell will be meeting with representatives of the entertainment industry about the county and state regulations, and I think we can certainly request that Film L.A. be invited to attend these.
Just as a matter of note, if I can interject, as with all elements of the industry that's affected by the enhanced grading that we're proposing now, I did send out mailers to those that were self-identified as motion picture caterers. The attendance at that meeting was very low, in contrast to, say, the Moncheros or some of the Southern California mobile food industry.
Colleagues, this begs the question, and I want to put this as a verbal, a friendly motion, that perhaps in light of what we've learned today and given the testimony we have heard, if we can carve out this portion of implementation so that we can get Film L.A. folks, the industry, to drill down a little bit further as to how we can improve this ordinance to address their need, not slow this down, but actually provide that carve-out so that we want to make sure that it's transparent, some of the industry folks, I mean, we shouldn't be hiding how they operate, what they're doing to offer food because the health is important. But maybe there are regulatory standards and issues that we can look at, revisit, that facilitates the film industry and doesn't hurt the caterers in that process, and just have like a task force that just focuses on that, just to get to a solution. Because I kind of feel we're rushing into it. We're getting this, these perspectives, but bottom line is, we should have a very healthy environment. It should be transparent, but perhaps we need to tweak those regulatory standards and have that task force to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange, I think, shares his opinion. He's next, and then Mr. Rosendahl.
Here, we got a solution here that we do right here. The state of California has fifty-eight counties, and the fifty-eight counties is Los Angeles County. In Los Angeles County, there's a few cities that are not part of county health, but we are part of county health since the nineteen-seventies. What we have to do to enact an ordinance, as we discussed earlier in committee, of variety of things that relate to food trucks, is the letter in which the industry supports. At the same time this comes forward, the film industry is concerned, and I think we should be concerned as well. And as recommended by the city attorney's office, what I've been working with the last twenty-four hours, that a simple motion, if I could read here, to the record, Mr. Clerk, to apply the ordinance only to food mobile facilities that sell food directly to individual consumers, will allow us to solve this problem and move forward. And that's what we want to do. I believe in the county health department. I believe in this gentleman who's helped us so many times, but those words will help us solve their problem to help them, say, roll them on any street in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
This is indeed a second for me, and it's a friendly motion, as is what Mr. Reyes has said. What we will do, if the colleagues all agree, as a friendly motion, is a task force with Film L.A. involved, working with the industry and working with the county for that flexibility that Mr. Labange and the carve-out that Mr. Reyes has said, so that we can more effectively address that issue. And with that, I'd like us to move forward with it. Thank you.
So we have the carve-out and the flexibility. Mr. City Attorney?
Just for clarification, Mr. President, the motion is to come back with a new ordinance? Or is it to?
Solve it today, Mr. City Attorney.
For the ordinance, we'd have to make those corrections and bring them back under our rules.
You can't do it right now? You can't do it right now? I'm just a city attorney who feels we could do it.
We need to work on it.
Will you come to the center table? I think we could do that.
Councilmember, we can, we can come back, we can try and have, come back tomorrow, but we do need to make sure that the language is consistent with the rest of the ordinance.
Okay, so we come back tomorrow.
Okay. Mr. Gardines?
Yes, could you please brief the council as to what your understanding of the changes that were presented to you in this forum today?
My understanding is that the motion would be to amend the draft ordinance, so to exclude from its scope, mobile food facilities that are not selling food at retail, essentially, so that we would come back with an ordinance that would be applicable to mobile food facilities that are selling food to the individual consumers. That is my understanding.
So basically, what we're trying to do is figure out a way to have legal language that legally shows that there's a difference between somebody who gets hired to cater and they're not selling on the premises, they're contracted to be there to serve a certain population, versus someone who actually drives around and says, "I'm going to pull up on this spot and I'm going to open up my window," or what have you, "and then I'm going to start selling to the general public as they walk up."
Correct. We believe that that's a rational basis upon which to draft the ordinance as amended.
Okay. Now, I just want to make sure that nobody gets offended when you say that's a rational basis. You're just talking about from a legal vantage point, not from a policy vantage point?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear because when it come, the only thing that I want to know is, what happens with the trucks that actually are hired and do show up to a venue and they're not selling retail? Do we understand what the mechanism is to make sure that that food is safe? Do they get inspected on a regular basis, or does it depend on what facility they emanate out of?
My understanding, which Mr. Powell can confirm or correct, is that if it is a truck that is dispensing food but not selling to the individual consumers, they will not have to post the grade that the county gives them. The county, however, will still be inspecting them and grading them. The only difference is that they will not, in fact, post the grade, so consumers will not be able to readily determine what grade they received.
Anything you'd like to expand on that?
Yeah, if I can throw a wrench into all this. A mobile truck, whether it is a taco truck, whether it's a gourmet truck, whether it's one that sells to the motion picture industry, has the exact same license, is under the exact same standards.
Sharon walks up to the.
They choose their customers, in essence. So those that declare themselves to be part of the motion picture industry, they've simply chosen that customer base as opposed to selling retail on the street. I find it very difficult to differentiate between the two, and I don't know if there is a legal basis to do that.
Okay. I'll push my button again, Mr. President. Thank you. You piqued my interest when you said that you find it difficult, yet we're listening to one of our city attorneys saying that perhaps we could do that, and maybe by tomorrow we're going to figure out how to do it legally and appropriately so that we have an ordinance that has standing, not something that will get thrown out in the courts very soon. So at what basis are you saying that you find difficulty understanding the differentiation between the two?
Well, as I mentioned, it is simply a matter of their prerogative as to what they want to be. They have a license to sell food. They choose a customer base that they wish to cater. That's it.
But there is a basic differentiation, I think, that, for example, when a food truck shows up at a movie filming site and they're hired by whoever it is that has arranged all of the activity around that site, there's no cash register there. So technically speaking, there's no one who says, "I'm hungry, there's a truck. I'm going to walk over that truck and I'm going to purchase some food." I don't know who they are, I don't know why they're parked there, what have you, but I think that there is a legal difference between that, where there's no cash register there, where they're not selling on the premises. They were contracted to provide a certain amount of food to a certain population, a captive population, and whereas you have another truck, for example, that might pull up right here on Main Street downtown at any given time upon whatever rationale that they have, but they have a cash register. And then if somebody walks up, they're going to sell them food. If somebody doesn't walk up to them and pay for it, they're not going to provide them food.
I would say this. When, I've rarely seen a retail mobile truck with a cash register. There, you may be able to witness a transaction, I would agree, but what I would point out is, a taco truck that might be on Alameda and Fifth on Tuesday, on Wednesday can cater an event. So there is no differentiation in licensing, it's simply a change in their business model.
Wonderful. You just pointed something out. If that particular truck or that business wants to have two different ways in which they do business, on Monday, they're showing up to a particular site where they do not have sales transactions on the premises, and then on Tuesday, if they want to go ahead and pull up on Fifth and Central, or if that's a location, if they want to pull up there and all of a sudden start having sales transactions, you have two different days, but at the same time, what we're trying to say here as policymakers is, we're trying to make sure that the trucks that pull up to sell to the general public, that we want to make sure that that general public understands that their relationship, when it comes to the health and safety, is in fact that they have a grade that they've received, and that they could look at that, they can look at the menu if they choose, they can look at that grade and say, "I don't care what the grade is." That's their business, but at least a certain standard will now have been elevated within the city of Los Angeles, our square mileage of the city of Los Angeles, where this ordinance would actually take place. So I appreciate the dialogue or what have you, but I don't exactly agree on all the little details that perhaps some of my colleagues have come up with, but I do agree on this basic premise, that if we're going to have food vehicles traversing around this big city and actually selling retail at any given moment, on any given place, at any given time, to any particular person, that I think that it is good to have that standard and making sure that they, those trucks are inspected and that the community, the individuals and the public at large, is aware of whether or not that standard is being adhered to by that particular truck. So that's, so you understand what the policy consternation going on here and the main impetus for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardines. We have Mr. Labange for a third time, and then Mr. Rosendahl for a fourth.
Deputy City Engineer Valerie Flores, would you report to the center table?
City Attorney, I think you called her an engineer. Let the record reflect.
Good morning.
This is the city attorney that I consulted with to try to find a solution, so if you can give us some ideas.
Thank you. Assistant City Attorney Valerie Flores, I did want to respond briefly. We do believe from the city attorney's office that the exemption is legally defensible, the exemption being for trucks that don't sell to individual members of the public. And the way we look at it is, it's defensible because if a movie industry hires a catering truck to come and service a film location, the filming company is in a very good bargaining position and has the sophistication to ask for the food grading report, the inspection report, so they have a way to ensure that food handling, safety standards are going to be met and have been met by the particular operator. If you're a member of the public and you go to a truck to buy a sandwich and it's the first time you've ever seen the truck and you're not familiar with the operator, you may not know your rights in terms of asking for the inspection report, and you may not have the same bargaining power over that sandwich to be able to demand certain standards be met. So we do believe that there is a basis legally to distinguish between trucks that cater to the film industry and their clientele, and trucks that sell to members of the public who don't have the same bargaining power.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. So, members, this is who I consulted with. So what is the motion? Can you repeat the motion that would help solve this?
Right, tomorrow, we would be bringing back, if the motion is passed, we would be bringing back an ordinance that would require food trucks, catering trucks, to post the letter grade given to them by the county after their inspection, but there would be an exemption for mobile food facilities that do not sell food directly to individual consumers.
Great. And then for the county representative, everything that you do as the county representative is online as well?
It is.
So to speak for the county, but I want the county, everything that you do, a restaurant, whether it's on a street, in a building, it's out of a food stand, on a corner, on a food truck on a street, all of that is accessible online, whether you come there. So all this is accessible online?
Yes.
Everything. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. We should look forward to seeing this tomorrow, if it's possible. Mr. Rosenoff?
Mr. Rosenoff?
Yeah, I don't want to confuse anybody any more than we already confused. The county has its rules, the state has its rules. Is that correct?
The county enforces state rules.
All right. So you've got your rules, and no matter what we do about carving out or changing it around, you're going to do what you do, because it's your obligation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. How many trucks are there out there now? How many food vans or commissary things do we talk about for the county?
In total, about 6,000. About half of those are carts or trailers. The rest are mobile catering trucks, about 3,000.
3,000. Okay. In the city of Los Angeles, what are we looking at, numbers-wise?
That's a very difficult number, because these trucks are mobile, and so they may emanate from many locations.
Okay. So you inspect them all, is your assignment?
Yes.
Okay. So what we're talking about here is, basically, we can't carve anything out from the law. The law's the law. So, Ms. Flores, we can't carve it out. What we can do is have flexibility, work with Film LA on location sites and how it deals with it. Because, you know, they're going to do what they're going to do, the state and the county. So I don't understand how you carve it out from any kind of responsibility.
Councilmember, the posting, the requirement of posting, I do not believe is a state law or a state requirement. So all we would be carving out is the locally imposed requirement of having to post the grade that is issued by the county.
Okay. All right. So then that clears it up, and it doesn't become an issue for any of us.
Correct.
Okay, good. That's what we needed to hear clearly said. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Then without objection, we'll continue that pending the amendments that were made today. The direction? Sorry, Mr. Babbans?
You don't have the vote on the motion?
There's no objection.
No objection, so that's the order of the day.
So we'll have that back tomorrow, and that'll be Wednesday, November 24th. Thank you. If we can take up the ordinances that we are holding on the desk, we do have 12 members now with Mr. Parks' arrival. So let's go ahead on items 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 43. If you could please prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 lines.
Those are approved on their first reading. Next item called special, please. That brings us to item 36, called special by Councilmember Zine. Mr. Zine, item 36 is before us. Would you like to take the cards first, or would you like to...
Mr. President, yes. Cards first.
Okay. All righty. We have John Marco is our first speaker. After that is Bob Amano. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's John Marco. I'm the general manager at the Coata Hotel, which is located in Second Hill Street. I'm also the treasurer for the Los Angeles Area Hotel Association. I speak on half of my peers, as well as our own business downtown. First, I want to assure you that the record indicated that at the committee meeting last week, there was no opposition. I assure you, I was the unvoiced opposition to it. The ordinance of retaining workers, if you look at a lot of my peers at the larger hotels, if they renovate hotels, and they need to change the structure of how they're going to be, and have fewer number of rooms, or take restaurants out, or different types of things, if they have to keep workers that they don't need, they don't do renovations. So major companies look at that and say, "Well, let's go to Chicago, or Atlanta, or other cities, where the cities are friendly and want businesses to invest in the city." For the Coata Hotel, we're at the corner of Second Hill, right across the street. It's going to be a beautiful new courthouse someday, a federal courthouse, also kitty corner to the Grand Avenue project, which will hopefully come along someday. If you want to look at our hotel, we'll probably renovate someday and become something else. If we don't need the number of people that we need today, and you're telling me I have to hire all those people back, and I have to retain people I don't need, it would probably be easier to develop something that I don't need any of them. Why do I need to have people employed and pay them, and retain people that I don't need? So we would develop a project that would become something else, other than a hotel. The issue goes around the city in terms of looking at all the different properties, and I can tell you, all my other peers, we've talked in our committee meetings, and they're opposed to this, and it's just putting restrictions on our businesses, and how we can operate our business, and making the city of Los Angeles not friendly for us to advance and to grow our business and do things. Our business is struggling right now, the market is down, our economy is suffering, and let me tell you, my business is suffering tremendously, as revenues are down 15%, 20%.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate your presence here. Bob Amano is next. James Elmandorf will follow Mr. Amano.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is Bob Amano. I'm the executive director of the Hotel Association of Los Angeles. As I am here this week, today, the association strongly opposes the passing of this ordinance. And looking at this, LA has a reputation for not being business-friendly. We hate to hear that word, but mandating business operations with regard to these ordinances are reinforcing that reputation quite strongly. If you take, for example, a potential new investor in the city in the hotel industry, looking to purchase or invest into our hospitality industry, they'll look at this ordinance and consider items of this ordinance a business distraction, not an attraction. It won't create jobs. It's going to affect our tax and fee revenues. Obviously, that brings bottom line, the over-economic climate is not changing and is dwindling. There needs to be further study in looking at the whole picture of this ordinance. Finally, there is a similar ordinance that was struck down by both the state's Superior and Appeals Court in regards to the California grocers, excuse me, the city grocers' worker retention. Now, that's not saying that there's further actions that will result from this, but again, as the Hotel Association, we take a look at this, we would encourage the economic impact studies to go forth, and also, again, urge you to vote no for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. James Elmandorf is our next speaker. After that is Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, councilmembers. James Elmandorf from the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, here today to talk about and support of this proposed ordinance. I want to make clear that the proposal today is intended to amend an existing ordinance that this council adopted by a vote of 14 to 1, requiring worker retention in the event of hotel sales only on the Century Boulevard about five years ago. The intent of that ordinance, and this one, is to ensure that when hotels are sold, that you do not have massive layoffs causing disruption to our economy. Contrary to what the concerns raised by some of the previous speakers, the ordinance does not require a particular level of staffing by any hotel. If a new owner comes in and recognizes that they need fewer employees, they are perfectly within their rights under the existing Century ordinance, and under the proposal here, to reduce their employment level. This merely says that if they intend to have some employees at their hotel, they should, for a period of 90 days, retain the employees who were there previously, to give them a chance to prove that they can do decent work. If, after that time, the hotel owner believes, the new owner believes that they need different employees for whatever reason, they're perfectly within their rights to make those decisions and identify new employees. So the intent here is merely to ensure that you don't have massive layoffs. I should say, this occurs rarely. When it does, it's dramatic for workers who lose their jobs and are thrown out in the streets. What's before you today is a request to have a study, and to ask the city attorney to begin the process of looking at the legal issues. We do not believe there are any legal issues, since the council has adopted this around Century Boulevard, but obviously, we would ask that the council move forward, at asking the city attorney to begin to draft the ordinance, and asking for a study to ensure that there are none of the unforeseen consequences that have been raised by previous speakers. We believe there are none, and we believe the experience of the past five years, Century Boulevard would demonstrate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. He seems to have gone. Ann Williams? After Ms. Williams is Carol Schatz.
I'd like to cede my time to Carol Schatz, thanks.
All right. She has a card. She's our next speaker. Maya Zettler will follow.
Thank you. Carol Schatz, President of Central City Association. We strongly oppose the expansion of the hotel worker retention ordinance being contemplated before you today. What is the problem, and where is the fire? Three hotels have been sold recently. All of them have kept their employees, their existing employees. Mr. Elmandorf just said to you that it's rare in a sale for the new ownership to eliminate the existing employees. But if you pass, if you even authorize the city attorney to draft this ordinance, you are setting a very dangerous and very broad precedent. There are legal issues. That is, that's ridiculous, that someone would suggest there are no legal issues. At the airport, the tie-in between the living wage and worker retention was the proximity of those hotels to the airport. There is no such proximity here. There's no nexus that's been established. What is to prevent this from being applied to any industry that the unions want to organize? The banking industry? Department stores? There are lots of sales and acquisitions that take place in a number of industries, and the way this is worded, it is broad enough that it could cover any of them. This was rushed through? Why are we looking at this today? Why would you suggest that an ordinance be drafted before you have an economic impact to show what impact it can have? And we've just been told that this economic impact, there's no money for it. So you're essentially asking that the ordinance be drafted with no economic analysis to go along with it. What we are saying is, evaluate the economics, and then send it for drafting if you determine that there's no negative impacts. I think you'll find that there are. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maya Zettler. After that is Jessica Duboff.
Good morning. Maya Zettler, on behalf of VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. VICA is here to strongly oppose this motion that is before you today. We feel that motions like this send the wrong message, that our city, the city of Los Angeles, is not business-friendly. The city of Los Angeles has been working tirelessly in recent months to change its reputation, and we should continue on that path. We have been recently working to introduce ideas such as the new business tax exemption to help the city of Los Angeles, and to show businesses that the city of Los Angeles is open for business and is business-friendly. We are asking you today to please slow down and not move forward with this motion. Regulations such as this will only result in uncertainty for business, will discourage investment, hinder job creation, and thus, we oppose this before you today. We do not believe that we need to place additional burdensome regulations and restrictions on hotels, and weaken their ability to conduct commerce in the best ways that they see fit. We hope that you will not put this industry at a competitive disadvantage, and we ask that you slow down today and not move forward with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Duboff is our next, and our last speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Jessica Duboff, on behalf of the LA Chamber of Commerce. This ordinance is an example of city council motions that are rushed through committee without a thorough analysis of its impact on business or economic climate. Motions like this send a message to businesses to avoid Los Angeles because of the creeping nature of city regulations. Motions like this are also why you created a pilot project for an Office of Economic Analysis. It's not enough to rely on studies commissioned by organizations that are actively lobbying for this motion. Instead, we ask you to approve sending this to the OEA for an independent analysis by actual economists before a vote. Four years ago, the city council assured the business community that these types of ordinances would not extend beyond the LAX corridor. We support the hard-working employees that deserve a good job with dignity. We also support the job-creating employers at LA's hotels who are struggling to operate in a very challenging economy. The most responsible way for city government to ensure the economic vitality of our city is to do a careful, objective analysis before approving legislation that pushes more regulation on job creators. This is your opportunity to demonstrate that the Office of Economic Analysis is real, and that you're serious about making policy decisions based on the most accurate, sound information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's our final speaker. The speaker queue for the council is Mr. Zine, Ms. Perry, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Gardnus. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mentioned the Office of Economic Analysis, to perform independent economic analysis, but there is no Office of Economic Analysis. So we can't perform economic analysis without a department to do that. But we do have the CAO, we do have the CLA, we do have other opportunities, and as has been stated, 15% to 20% drop in occupancy. I know, speaking to hotel management around the city, none of them are thriving with guests, and some of the hotel rates have dropped because of the lack of folks visiting because of economic situations. And I believe that we need to put the horse before the cart. I think if we support an ordinance today, moving forward with drafting by the city attorney's office, what we're doing is locking ourselves into a situation without the analysis. And I think, before the analysis, we're premature on it. So what I would recommend is that we continue this matter, and have the CAO, the CLA, do an analysis to find out if it's feasible, if it's realistic, before we go into this endeavor for the workers at the harm of the management and the operators of the hotels. So I would hopefully encourage my colleagues to support a continuation, not to ask for the ordinance to be drafted, but to be reasonable, and we keep saying we're business-friendly, and we need to exercise and display that business-friendly attitude, in a manner which supports not only the workers, but supports the business. If a hotel goes out of business, there will be no workers there, and we need to have a balance. The same thing with apartment owners. If you have an apartment, you have no tenants, it doesn't work. There's got to be a balance. And I think that what we find with this, without the economic analysis, we're not balanced on it, and we're going to maybe harm the industry, maybe send another negative message that LA is not a friendly place to operate your business. And as has been stated, the Court of Appeals did uphold the worker retention ordinance that was rejected by the state Superior Court, and also the State Court of Appeals. That can be argued pro and con, but the bottom line is, we don't have the facts before us to say is it going to hurt or not hurt. And I would encourage, talk to hotel management around the city, and you will find that they are not flush with people who are, as they talk about hotel nights, they are not flush with the visitors for this region, and a lot of factors regarding that. So I would recommend that we do that, not support this at this particular time, get the facts before we move forward on an ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair of the committee will go next. Ms. Hahn?
Mr. President, colleagues, what this motion is before us is to request the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance to amend our hotel worker retention ordinance to apply to all hotels having 50 rooms or more in the city of Los Angeles. This motion directs the city attorney to draft language that would extend our current ordinance. And by the way, the concept of worker retention has been around in Los Angeles since 1995, and is very simple. And here are the facts. When a business changes hands, the new owner is required to keep the current workers for 90 days. That's it. One of the speakers talked about having to hire back employees after they renovated. That's not what's before us today. This is very simple. This is just about saying that those workers in our hospitality industry, those workers who are on the front line of tourism in the city of Los Angeles, have a little bit of stability when a hotel changes ownership. That's all we're asking to do. And as was said, in the case of hotels, hotels, you know, there haven't been that many sold, but in fact, we do have the facts before us, Mr. Zine, and the facts are, that on Century Boulevard, since we've had this in operation, every hotel that's gone through a sale has gone through smooth, no challenges, no problems. It never prevented one sale, it never prevented one dollar of investment in Los Angeles. It went through perfectly well. After 90 days, if the hotel owner decides he doesn't want, he or she doesn't want the current workers, then there's nothing to do. But in these tough economic times, colleagues, I think it's the right time. And we're not rushing it, by the way. We're not rushing it. As you know, it's going to take some time for the city attorney to come back with the draft ordinance. And I believe we need the ordinance before us, so that the city attorney can answer our questions before we vote on it, on whether or not it can withstand a legal challenge, whether or not the language is how we want to see it. So I, too, had asked for an analysis from the economic analysis office, but we apparently don't have one that's up and running at this time. So I've asked the CLA, and I'm going to amend what we're doing today, to ask the CLA to come back with an economic analysis on this motion, have that come back. When the ordinance comes back, you will have it before you, before you vote on it, on whether or not you think this makes sense for Los Angeles. But I'll tell you, in these tough times, you know, we want people paying their bills. We want people paying their mortgages. We want people buying things, which adds to the sales tax. And the workers in the hotel are the ones that... And the workers in the hotel are the ones that keep this economy going. And so I don't think it's a rushed judgment. I don't think, we don't have the facts before us. We have an ordinance in place that we've been able to study. And by the way, there was three items, if you remember, to our hotel ordinance along Century Boulevard. It was the living wage, it was the worker retention, and it was the tip retention. Remember, we thought people ought to deserve the tips that people gave them. The retention part of it was never challenged by the hotels. That was never an issue with them. They accepted that and have worked with it perfectly well. It was the living wage, as you remember, that we were challenged on, and then we ultimately were victorious on that. I think this is the right thing for us to do. Let's look at the ordinance after the city attorney drafts it. Let's have this economic analysis come back so we know what impact this has to our economy. But asking a new hotel owner to keep the current workforce in place for 90 days, I think is good for business. And I think it's good for the city. And I think it gives people a bit of stability in what otherwise is a very unstable time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Back in 2006, when we approved this ordinance, it was in November of 2006, it was limited to those hotels that were in close proximity to the airport and enjoyed the benefit of being near the airport. And there was a clearer nexus between that occupancy rates on the Century Corridor and the closest to the airport. Now, my concern is, and obviously I represent a different district, more further removed from the airport, to expand the ordinance to include hotels with 50 or more rooms is something I think needs to be very closely examined. And I question, and I need an answer from the city attorney on that, and I'd like it on the record in writing, whether or not it actually jeopardizes the current ordinance. And I'm asking for a separate standalone ordinance before we amend or even create a new one. I think we need to know how many hotels would be impacted. We need to be very clear on why the city can impose new rules on private hotel owners who are not close to LAX so we don't make the same proximity nexus in expanding this that we did with the LAX. And I would also like a CAO and CLA analysis in order for me to move at all on this, but I want the city attorney, and maybe the CLA can incorporate that into their report, to analyze for me the difference between amending this ordinance and let them have a standalone ordinance, and then I can vote it up or down.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Mr. President, I'd ask the city attorney to come up.
Mr. Parks, the attorney who is assigned to this ordinance before, she's on leave right now, and so will take any direction or request to research any of these--
I just was wondering, what is the current, do we have a current living wage, not the living wage, but worker retention other than the grocery worker retention and the LAX worker retention? Is there another ordinance that's in play?
Actually, Valerie Flores could answer that question.
Good morning again, Valerie Flores, Assistant City Attorney. Yes, currently, we have a hotel worker retention ordinance in connection with the Century Corridor area.
Okay, now, so we have no other worker retention?
Not for hotels, no.
Okay. Now, one other thing is, what is the status of the grocery worker retention?
That I'll have to get back to, and I don't know the status.
But it's going through a legal process? Is that currently where it is?
Yes.
Okay. The other issue on LAX, did it go through a legal process that the hotels sued?
Yes.
Okay. And what was the finding of the court as to when it was implemented?
The challenge affected the provision of the ordinance that required a payment of a living wage, and we successfully defended the ordinance all the way up to the Court of Appeal.
Okay. And was there a, the impact on our winning, the city winning, was the fact that it was a nexus or that we described or put forth that nexus to LAX and the hotels?
That was one of the bases, yes.
Okay. Now, was that study done prior to the ordinance?
Uh--
Or was there a study done?
I don't believe there was a study done, except that we did, well, not by the city, that we did have some data showing that the hotels near the LAX area had a higher occupancy rate than other hotels in the city. And that was one of the bases that we cited in our legal papers, but that was a report that the city obtained but didn't commission.
Okay. And do we have something on worker retention regarding city contracts?
Yes.
Okay. Now, how does that work? Is that if somebody displaces someone with a contract, is that--
Yes, I believe so, but again, I'll have to get back to you on that. That's my area.
The one thing, and I'd like to follow with Mr. Zein was saying, I think that, what I would think in the process is that we need a nexus study or something that's close to it, and then we'd need the financial analysis, and those two issues would drive the ordinance. And my concern is if we do the ordinance simultaneously, you would lose all the information or the substance or the documentation of those two documents. So I would ask that we look at the nexus study, we look at the economic analysis, and then use that as a basis of whether an ordinance should be forthcoming.
You want to make that as a motion?
I'd make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. It's seconded by Mr. Zein, Ms. Perry. Mr. Carton.
Could I have the CLA or CAO come forward? The economic analysis study or the potential thereof on this particular matter, has that been ordered or commissioned yet?
Not yet, no.
Not yet?
Yeah, I should ask for it.
So what is the procedure that the CAO and the CLA, because it's my understanding that we empowered the CLA and the CAO with $250,000 that was put into a fund on behalf of a motion that the president of the Council of our city had put together. But with that action, the individuals or the organizations that were empowered to call for these studies on a case-by-case basis was the CAO and the CLA. Is that correct?
Well, the CAO, the instruction was for the CAO to form that office, at least temporarily, to get it up and running. You will be discussing a larger economic development consolidation and stuff later, but for the time being, the CAO was instructed to do that. My understanding, I checked yesterday, is that they're near, that they're going to be issuing a request for proposals shortly to try to bring contractors on to perform the function. But right now, it is not up and running.
So right now, we don't even have contractors that are in a pool for us to pick from. So if we were to require a study on this from the economic analysis, it's not a department, but the entity now in the city called the economic analysis entity, we would have to start from scratch, correct? And call for firms through an RFP or pick a firm that already has a relationship with us, who has the expertise? How would we do that?
Well, we could. Now, in this instance, it's fairly, it's a pretty focused and specialized area. There are hotel consultants that have worked with the city. As a matter of fact, my office has just gone through a process to look at hotel consultants on the Wilshire Grand project. So we could, on an expedited basis, get a consultant to come in to review the performance of, or the results of the Century Corridor ordinance and also opine on impact on hotel operations. So if the council directs that we do that, it's certainly feasible to do that, and my assumption is that we would use some of that funding that had been allocated to do that contract.
Yeah. And see, the thing is, the general concept of this is very well-meaning when it comes to looking at the vantage point of the actual workers within hotels, within the city at large. But yet, at the same time, as a policymaker, I don't even know how many hotels this affects. I don't know how many hotels that are going to remain exempt. I don't even know how many hotel workers we have that would be affected by this and what basis that is of the hotel workers that engulf the entire hotel worker industry within the city of Los Angeles limits. And those are just some tertiary things that come to mind as I look at this today. And the fact that we actually have mechanisms to have this kind of analysis, and the analysis hasn't even been called for, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I would like to see that analysis come forth to this council, not in a rush manner, but in a way that we could actually look at that analysis, form our opinions as individual policymakers, and then as a collective, then have a vote on that. So that's what I'd like to see happen. So, Mr. President, I'd like to definitely ask that, I don't know if we would do it as a separate motion or amendment to this motion or what have you, that we not have a vote on this until we have that analysis before us. And so, as people understand, I'm not trying to play games here. I don't think that that analysis should take a year or six months or what have you. Hopefully, that analysis can be for us within the next 60 to 90 days so we can have a full vote on the council with open eyes and to be able to see exactly what we're doing and how we're affecting our economy, both the economy at large, the workers within our hotels within the city, and also the people who are current owners and potential owners of hotels as well. Thank you.
Mr. Reis.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify on the issue of whether we go forward simultaneously with the economic analysis and the ordinance. Will the economic analysis change any of the ordinance as it is being drafted? Can I ask the city attorney that and the CLA? Jerry, if you want to answer that question?
Well, I think that's really more of a question for the city attorney.
So can the city attorney come up, please?
So the question is, if we move forward simultaneously and the economic analysis is there with the ordinance, would the economic analysis affect what the ordinance is calling for?
Not necessarily, but if the economic analysis supported the bases, the rational bases for the ordinance or the exercise of our police power, it would strengthen the ordinance--
I see.
In terms of if it were ever challenged in court.
So we would have to have it strengthen our rational analysis, our rational basis for the action we're taking and why, how we justify for taking that action?
Correct. It would strengthen it.
If it strengthened. Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Hahn.
Okay. Here's what I think we should do. I think clearly, I think we have a test case on Century Boulevard, which has worked very well, but clearly I can see the concern by some of my colleagues. So here's what I think should happen. I think we should have the economic analysis, and I think our CLA or CAO should be involved in that. If you want to get a hotel consultant in that little working group, I think that works. But I think we need a city attorney's analysis in that. We need a legal analysis. And part of colleagues, why I wanted to begin to draft the ordinance was because sometimes that's how we get our legal analysis from the city attorney, is when they begin looking at the language. But if a city attorney can give us that analysis without drafting the ordinance, then I think that will be a better package to present to my colleagues to then move to draft that ordinance. So why don't we get that report first? And again, I would like to see us have this, you know, sometime in the first part of the new year. Let's not take a long time to do this. And then I think you will have more of what you need in front of you to move forward with this ordinance. How many hotels it's going to affect, you know, what economic analysis, what impact it might have on the region. But I think we need a legal opinion as well. And most of the time, the city attorney sometimes needs the language to give us the legal opinion on what it's going to look like. But if you could give us a legal analysis of what this ordinance could look like, would look like, how it differs maybe from the grocery workers' retention, because that was a different ordinance altogether.
Right.
And then bring that back to us, and then we'll look to take another look at this ordinance in the first of the year. How about that, everybody? Does that work? Okay. So I make that.
All right. Is there a second?
Second. Third, fourth, fifth.
All right. Mr. Parks, is that a second? Or, okay, Mr. Zein was next. It's a second for Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Zein is next, and then Mr. Parks.
Question, because I think you debated this long enough.
Okay.
All right. Is there objection?
We can first--
Okay. There's no objection, then. I'm sorry, Mr. Parks, sorry. I can't hear you. Sorry, Mr. Parks. So we'll have to take a vote on call question. Yes vote is to end debate, no vote is to continue debate, please. Mr. Parks has not spoken for a second time, so this is a 10-person vote. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight is four no.
All right. Mr. Parks is next. He's the last speaker on the queue.
I think the point I want to make is that, and I don't disagree with Ms. Hahn, but I don't think we can ignore the nexus study, particularly when the city attorney said it helps strengthen what the rationale is. So if we just come up with a legal analysis without the nexus study, then we've only gone halfway. And the legal analysis, I don't think, can be complete unless you know there's a nexus. And so I think that's what I, my motion asks, that we have those two pieces before you write the ordinance, because part of the ordinance is basically determining, or is based on the fact there's a nexus, and without the study, you're just guessing there's a nexus. So I would just ask, on Ms. Hahn, certainly I agree that we need the financial analysis, we need the legal analysis, but we can't get around the nexus study. So that's what I'd like to see, if we could add that in your request. Pardon?
Nexus study, too.
The nexus study should be part of that package you just asked for on the legal analysis, because you can't come up with the legal analysis unless you have determined there's a nexus. And so you can't determine it's a nexus without studying it. So that's what I'm asking, that was my motion that Mr. Zein seconded, was that we have the nexus study, we have the financial analysis, and then Ms. Hahn has asked for a legal analysis, and then that's what then creates the ordinance.
Sure.
And so that would be, again, my motion, that we have those, at least those two things before we get to an ordinance. But I don't think we can make a judgment just on the legal analysis, because the legal analysis would be short of a primary issue of whether there's a nexus.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry.
Yeah. And again, I wanted to reiterate, and I guess maybe I could append to Mr. Parks' motion, the, you know, in the airport situation, there was a clear nexus. And I need to know, and for me to even consider this, what is the nexus for spreading this citywide, and what is the impact of having a standalone ordinance versus amending the existing ordinance? Because I would argue that this should be a standalone ordinance, and because it is a fact pattern that we're arguing or discussing here is very distinct from having a nexus for airport hotels on the corridor leading to and out of the airport. I didn't want that point to be lost in the discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Clerk, there's no more speakers on the queue right now. Any clarification necessary, Mr. Clerk?
None needed, sir.
Tell us what's before us, Mr. Clerk.
You have a Hahn-Rosendahl motion to provide an economic analysis as well as a legal analysis before any instruction to prepare an ordinance on this matter. You also have a Parks-Zein-Perry motion that would request those same studies as well as a nexus study before any request to the city attorney to prepare an ordinance.
So those are two of the same motions?
They would appear to be friendly, sir.
And just act on that. So we vote on it, Mr. Clerk?
Pardon me, sir?
Open the roll. Mr.--
One vote amended as amended together.
For clarification, would it be counsel's desire to continue the matter, excuse me, continue the--
Basically, what we have here is two motions that call for basically the same thing. Let's combine them together and then send that forward. All right. So you got that, Alan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clerk? Okay. So on that issue there, you want to read it to us, so we're legal? I want Mr. Clerk--
We're good, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn? Thank you. We're good? Okay. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven is.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Item number 57, called Special for Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this is a reward motion for $75,000. We have two young men, Jose Martinez, 24 years old, Samuel Martinez, 20 years old, who were shot and killed in September. The heinous crime, the atrocity here is, they were approached with that ugly question, "Where are you from?" As a result, they were shot in the face and shot in the head, and they were killed. Marvin Gonzalez, a friend, was also shot. He survived. And I'm asking the public, I'm asking the public, we need your help. It's a $75,000 reward. You could respond anonymously. You could respond anonymously. Will these cowards who are out in the street, who will continue to endanger our families, our community, without your help, it'd be very hard to bring them to justice? So please, help us out. If I have any information, the crime occurred on Division Street at the border of Glassop Park and Cypress Park, across the Super A supermarket. We know people were around, we know people heard something, we know there are people out there that can help us. Please, give us your support to bring these people to crime. Bring these criminals to justice. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Clerk. Let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, forthwith on that. Any other items before us, Mr. Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and for all.
Thank you very much. Any announcements, members?
Mr. President, there are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cartness requests to be excused on January 21, 2011 for city business. That meets council policy.
So ordered.
Councilmember Labonge requests to be excused as follows: to leave at 11:45 on December 14, 2010.
So ordered.
To leave at 12:45 on December 15, 2010.
So ordered.
To leave at 12:30 on February 22, 2011.
So ordered.
To leave at noon on February 23, 2011.
So ordered.
Mr. Labonge further requests to be excused on February 15, March 1, March 2, March 4, March, and March 8, 2011 for city business. That meets council policy.
So ordered.
Mr. President, the desk is clear.
Thank you very much. Any announcements, Mr. Cartness?
Adjourned motion.
All right, no announcements. Please all rise for adjourned motions. It's okay, we're going to adjourn any in memory of people here. We've got a quorum. We're here. Mr. I, Mr. Clerk, when are you to say that when we're rising for a adjourned gentleman? Mr. City Attorney?
All right, let me just--
Very good. With the following members, please--
Mr. Clerk, wait a second, please. Okay, just a second. Well, you, it's been requested by a member for a quorum call. Please call the quorum call.
Would the following members please answer here if, in fact, they are here when their name is called? Alarcon? Cartness?
Here.
Hahn?
I'm here.
Huizar?
Here.
Caretz?
Here.
Krikorian? Labonge?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Perry?
Here.
Reyes? Rosendahl?
Here.
Smith? Wesson? Zine?
Here.
Garcetti. Nine members present.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any excused today, Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Note those who are excused. Members, we've lost a quorum. Would anyone like to make an announcement? Mr. Cartness?
Thank you, members. It's with great sadness that I'd like to announce that tomorrow, I'll be journeying in the memory of Aristides Campos. He passed away on December 29, 2009. He passed away from cancer. Aristides Campos was born in El Salvador in the Department of Santa Ana on July 29. At a young age, he possessed the desire to help the underprivileged in town, and at the age of 20, he moved to Costa Rica to attend formal schooling. Upon completing his studies, Aristides returned to El Salvador and taught at the local high school and later at the university. Aside from being an educator, Aristides worked as an economist and insurance consultant. Never forgetting his passion to help others and his community, Aristides and his friends voluntarily rented huge pieces of land in the west side of the country during the Salvadorian Civil War, where they placed rice and beans to feed families in towns where only women and children were left behind. His commitment to communities and love for young people crossed international waters when he volunteered alongside his son, Bureau of Sanitation employee Vladimir Campos, which many of us know and have been, experienced his wonderful work. And at the 2006 Celebrating Clean Community and Environment Services Fair, Aristides was so excited to see his families coming together to clean, families coming together to clean their neighborhoods and learn about being environmentally conscious at the Environmental Services Fair. At the age of 80 years old, Aristides went back to school and was a student of theology at the university where he was number one, the number one student. And also former professor, Don Lisandro Bejorque stated, and I quote, "Aristides was like a child in the things of our heavenly Father." On October of 2009, Aristides was diagnosed with stomach, colon, and liver cancer. On December 29, 2009, Aristides Campos passed away at the age of 80 years of age, leaving a strong legacy. Present today is, and he's survived by his wife, Argentina de Campos, who came all the way from El Salvador and to participate in tomorrow's adjourned motion, and his children, Vladimir and Lydia, Margarita Campos, and grandchildren, Stephanie, Carolina, and Oscar Rivera. Once again, it's with great sadness that we announce his passing, yet at the same time, it's wonderful to hear all the wonderful things that he did while he was with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cartness. Any other announcements? This meeting is held by adjourn. Thank you very much.